Six thirty.
Recording in progress.
Things may be recorded. Uh, start with the pledge.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, welcome to all our big crowd this evening. Start with comments from the audience. Is there anyone who would like to make a comment this evening? Hearing none, do we have any additions to the agenda?
We do not.
On to routine business. Uh, could we have a motion, please, to approve the minutes of January eleventh, twenty twenty four Board of Education Business Meeting?
I'll make a motion.
Back in for you. First, we have questions, comments, or edits of these minutes. All those who favor the motion, please say aye.
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 Guess we established through that's Sue Pike and Ben Davies. Um, okay, uh, Board of Education Committee reports, finance.
Oh, um.
Oh, I missed the part where we said nay, or that was everybody, whatever, sorry.
All those in favor? Yeah, we did that. We're good.
Motion passes, uh, finance committee.
Okay, we met and, uh, we are forty-six percent expanded as compared to forty-eight percent last year. Of course, special education is an ever-changing landscape and Superintendent Kent will continue to look with this.
Thank you. So in terms of transfers for, uh, January, we have just a few. Uh, we needed a reclassification to cover the handicap replacement of the handicap banned steps entire replacements. Uh, to reclass for professional development travel expense, a reclass, uh, transfer from athletics professional services. I just want to remind the board that we had budgeted for an athletic trainer and, uh, integrated rehab was not able to provide us with an athletic trainer for this year, um, but that money had been approved in the budget. So transferring monies out of that to put in, uh, whiteboards in each of the locker rooms at the high school. So coaches can draw up plans and whatnot, uh, in between acts in a game and, um, a camera to stream all of the home events in the gym. Uh, then we have a reclass to just cover some shipping costs and a reclass to cover, uh, National Council of Teachers of Mathematics Membership. Any questions?
Uh, I guess we'll come up from them to approve the transfers for January.
I'll make a motion to, um, approve the transfer for January.
Yep, I'll say.
Actually, we have any questions or comments about these transfers? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Or anyone who's opposed or abstaining. Um, okay, that one passes.
And then I have something else for finance. That's okay. Um, so I just want to remind the board that in our capital list for this year, uh, this year, we are replacing one of the geothermal pumps and controls at the high school. We had put in our Kappa request for next year, the other geothermal pump and control. When finance, uh, committee met, uh, and we had the Kappa discussion, uh, we were in the process of trying to narrow down the ask, uh, for both the Board of Ed and the town. And I suggested that we remove the ask for the geothermal pump to control and replacement for next year because we had enough money in our operating budget this year to get it done at the same time that we're doing the first part of it, and it just makes more sense if we can to do it all together at the same time. So having said that, I just, even though I don't know technically that we need to do this, but for purposes of transparency, I think it's a good idea. So I'm requesting that you authorize a reclassification transfer of twenty-three thousand dollars from electricity to repairs and maintenance, which is all within the operations budget to cover the full cost of the geothermal pumps and controls replacement. So I'll need a motion for twenty-three thousand dollars from electricity to repairs and maintenance within the operations budget.
I'll take a moment.
And I'll second. Okay, thank you.
Um. So anybody have any questions or comments about this? Is this? I do, I guess the pumps, is this what we expect for the lifespan, so?
I.
Redo the years or so, we need to replace them?
Yeah, Jeff.
Yeah, we think so. So just for the members of the board that don't know, we don't, we burn no oil here. We burn very little gas. Uh, everything is electrical through these heat pumps. So these circulating pumps take turns and share the load, but they run twelve to twenty-four hours a day for thirteen years.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments? Um, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Um, there's no one left to say nay or abstain, so that motion passes as well.
Thank you.
Are we done with finance?
We are.
Very good. Okay, community meeting reports. Do we have community meetings to report on?
I attended the most recent Bolton Scholarship Fund, uh, meeting. We're getting ready for the bonus on, uh, which will come late in March, I believe. Um, thank you to Principal Mafeli and his staff for helping us get that organized. Really appreciate that. Um, we decided to, uh, open the application for scholarships a bit later than normal this year, um, partly because of the problems that the federal government is having with the FAFSA and the students are not going to even know what financial aid they're getting until sometime in March. Uh, typically in past years, we've opened applications March first. Doesn't make sense this year. Uh, we've also noticed that very few people complete their applications that early. Um, but a lot of people start applications and then never come back and finish them or end up creating multiple applications in various forms of completeness. So it will probably be April first that we, uh, open. So students will still have a full month and the deadline will be, I believe it will be May first this year.
Uh, thank you. Any other community meetings?
Here, um, the big one is the gala is going to be on March first. There's still tickets available. That's our big push right now for fundraising and community events. Um, there's also lots of other tickets available, like sponsor jam and ice skating things and other things that are purchased field purchased slightly discounted. PTA doesn't necessarily get any funds or kickback from it, um, to be able to join a bunch of events. There's also, I think today was the last or tomorrow's the last day for if you want Krispy Kreme donuts, that'll get delivered next food day. Um, so that's available as well. And then I'm sure they're starting to plan a few more dine out fun nights to get together and stuff too.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Um, any other community meetings? We had the town meeting the other day ago where we, um, approved the carryover of bond monies to replace the energy management system. Um, it only lasted a couple of minutes and I just missed it. I know we had to call people there. Thank you. Kind of otherwise on a bent bolt. Okay, I'll now turn things over to the superintendent, the superintendent of school reports.
Okay, great. Thank you. Jen, can we dim the lights? Thanks. All right. Good evening, everybody. Uh, it is my pleasure to present to you, uh, Superintendent's recommended budget for two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five. I just want to just remind everybody that all of our work is grounded in our portrait of a graduate and our mission to inspire all of our students to grow as learners, individuals, and citizens. And our vision for the Bolton Public Schools is that all students are empowered to embrace learning, a healthy mindset, continually build knowledge, develop skills, and become engaged global citizens. For an overview of the expenditure plan, you can see that it is a proposed three point five-two percent increase with, uh, the majority of it sixty-three percent going to salaries, another twenty percent for benefits, two percent for regular instruction, four percent for student support services or special education, four percent for administration and business, and seven percent for operations. Here is another way of looking at the distribution of the increase. And you can see that the major driver are the salaries of the employees, uh, that do an amazing job educating our children um, with a small number for benefits, which I just want to call to the board's attention that both the Board of Ed and the town right now are budgeting a six percent increase for health insurance. Um, the state is saying right now it's between three and five percent. But as we know, uh, we had an incident a couple of years ago where they said between eight and ten and it ended up being twelve percent. So, um, I spoke with Jim Rupert and we are in agreement, we're going to stay here for right now. The state has indicated the state partnership plan that they will be releasing the final rates earlier because it is problematic for districts and municipalities when they're releasing their rates in May. And we're, you know, voting on budgets at that point. So they said March first, when I pushed back and asked for a little more clarification on that, maybe we'll know by March fifteenth. Um, so it's possible we may have additional savings there to offer in this budget before it's all said and done, but we won't know that till later on in March. And then moving on, uh, again, another way to look at an overview of the drivers. Um, for the overview of the increase, eighty-one point three-nine percent of the three point five-two percent increase is for our contractual obligations. Nine point two-six percent is for special education, which is mandated programming by law. And nine point three-five percent of the three point five-two percent increase is simply an increase in costs in maintenance of operations, whether it's instructional needs or building operations, repairs, school insurance, transportation, technology for students, and technology support and maintenance. Uh, the initial budget asked, once all of the teachers were done, um, providing their budget ask to our, uh, teacher leaders, and then the teacher leaders met with administrators, the ask was four point nine-seven percent. That included all requested funds, um, for materials, technology, operations, and maintenance. It included adding back world language in grades five and six, which I got to tell you, I, I really wanted to get that back in here. It also included maintaining an athletic trainer funding. Uh, to get to three point five-two percent required some reductions in instructional materials, uh, technology, uh, grades five and six world language, uh, and the athletic trainer funding. In terms of revenue, we are projecting two hundred and twelve thousand nine hundred dollars in federal grants, four hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars in state grants for a total projected grant award of seven hundred thousand nine hundred dollars. I just want to remind the board that we pay for, uh, students attending magnet and agricultural, uh, schools out of our choice monies. Um, in the governor's budget proposal today, it's looking like the cost to districts, if the governor's budget is approved, to send students to magnet schools will be higher than what we are currently budgeting right now. So that's a, stay tuned on that. For our capital proposals, uh, you did, I did send you a revision for this, um, from what I had originally sent out, um, because the geothermal pump two, uh, was taken off of there. Um, so we have the BCS HVAC assessment and determination was made at Finance Committee that we would set aside eight thousand dollars a year for what's it, four years, I think, till we get to the fifth year out when this is due again. So that we're, because it's a, an annual cost that has to happen every five years that we can kind of project out so that the final cost in year five will not be this huge hit when you get there for a capital. Um, also, one of the trucks that we requested for sixty-eight thousand dollars that was in the board's capital plan was taken out and moved to next year. Um, so that is what was moved forward, uh, by finance and I believe what's been approved by the Board of Selectment. We, I just continue to keep this up there. Um, it was also on the list, um, that was discussed at Finance Committee about potential referendum items, including the roof replacement at BCS. There was discussion that I think it's in two thousand twenty-six. One of the bonds comes off and so it's likely looking at maybe fiscal twenty-seven before we're looking at potentially a new roof project for Bolton Center School, which would also include the air handlers, potential air conditioning for classrooms, the replacement of the current units on the roof now. Um, I keep the high school soccer field on there because it just needs to stay there because we're constantly underwater here. Uh, the science lab upgrade and the library remodel. The one thing that isn't on that list any longer is the demolition of the, uh, greenhouse at Bolton Center School because that is attached to the demolition of Notch Road project. So that's going to be done as part of that project because they've got much better, um, price, if you will, right? Because you're doing it all at the same time. And then looking at our enrollment, um, you know, again, I want to just remind the board that, uh, this coming year, the kindergarten age requirement has changed. And as a result, we anticipate that there will be fewer students in kindergarten for one more year. And then we anticipate a bump the following year, um, which you can see there in, in, in our little bit of a decline at Center School. Um, we had a little bit of an uptick at middle school and, and high school is climbing back up. Then in terms of Columbia enrollment, I mean, you see the same thing echoed in their enrollments right there. I have over there on the, on the right side for twenty-three, twenty-four, you'll see a small kindergarten class this year. They also are anticipating a small, as is every district in the state, uh, small class for next year. Um, we are projecting eighteen students, uh, next year for our Columbia enrollment. And you see there what, uh, the tuition number is for next year and how that plays out, uh, into the general fund and the bond for the high school. I'd just like to do a shout out to our amazing teachers and administrators and paraprofessionals and our administrative assistants and our custodians and our central office team for the yeoman job that everyone does in educating the children of Bolton. And I want to highlight some of our accomplishments this year, including quality learning experiences to address the need of the whole child. Uh, embedded PD this year on trauma-informed practices and continuing with teacher clarity to support students' emotional health and the development of high-quality success criteria for our students. Uh, the reallocation of a position for the math coach at BCS to support the improvement of teachers' instructional practices and student achievement in math at the elementary level. Uh, ongoing expansion of the Bolton High School Yukon and ECE and, I'm sorry, Yukon and ECSU ECE dual enrollment programs. Implementing managed technology infrastructure support and cybersecurity services with Novus, uh, and advancing the BPS technology plan. Uh, the expansion at Bolton High School of computer science equipment, including the TI Innovator Rovers, which are programmable robots and the, uh, CX two CAS calculators, which are handheld programming devices. Uh, implemented comprehensive communication system this year with Parent Square for staff, students, and parents, uh, including text, email, app, and voice messaging, and the BCS pilot of a CSTE-approved K-five reading program. You know, in terms of student engagement, we, we have very engaged students in this, uh, small, uh, community of Bolton. Whether we've got students earning college credits, uh, students eligible to earn credit in one or more of the ten AP courses, college applications, three hundred and thirty-four of them were generated so far this year. Uh, numerous clubs offered. We have two hundred plus kids involved at the high school in clubs, two hundred and twenty-five kids plus at Center School involved in clubs. We've got two hundred and forty student athletes at the high school, a hundred and twenty-five at Center School. Uh, we've got two hundred and ninety-five students at BCS and eighty students at the high school participating in music ensembles and students participating in a variety of school art shows, um, and the variety of community service things they do, whether it's PG Day, uh, pajama day for kids to support children with cancer, food drives, the Veterans Day Assembly, which is an amazing, uh, experience. Um, the second annual winter family night, um, holiday meals. Uh, and we've got six hundred and forty hours of community service completed by Bolton High School students, which is amazing. I like this quote a lot, so you're all going to get it. "Education breeds confidence. Confidence breeds hope, and hope breeds peace," by Confucius. And then lastly, just a reminder that this, uh, FY twenty-five Superintendent's recommended budget is focused and grounded in our strategic plan. And our priorities include maintaining Bolton High School as a high-performing school district, student success, caring culture, talent development, and resource stewardship. Just want to remind everybody of our tagline, empower, build, develop, become. And lastly, just a reminder of our upcoming dates. And that concludes my presentation for this evening.
Thank you very much. Um, we have no unfinished business. Go on to new business and resignations.
Unfortunately, we, I have a resignation to share for, uh, that, uh, BCS Special Education Teacher Brittany Saloney, uh, has resigned and I want to thank her for her service to the Bolton Public Schools and wish her well.
Great. Uh, increasing educator diversity plan mandated by CSTE.
So Public Act twenty-three dash one sixty-seven, section ten A, provides, and I quote, "Not later than March fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, each local and regional Board of Education shall submit the increasing educator diversity plan described in subsection A of section ten dash two twenty of the general statutes as amended by this act to the Commissioner of Education for review and approval." Uh, in relevant part, Public Act twenty-three dash one sixty-seven ten specifically repealed the pre-existing statutory language of school boards, "Develop and implement a written plan for minority educator recruitment," which we just approved last month as a policy. A, a new one revised. Um, so even though we have revised our policy four-one-one-point-three in January to address the change, the BPS Increasing Educator Diversity Plan needs to be approved by the Board of Ed in order for me to upload the information and sign off that the board approved the plan. Uh, you do have, uh, the plan and in it, um, it reviews three specific parts that we have to upload into this specific document. One is centered around recruitment, one on hiring and selection, and one on retention. Any questions for me? You know, I will share with you, I codified what we do. This is what we already do as part of our, part of our hiring practices, which I think are robust. And for such a small community and school system, we do an awful lot in terms of recruiting and, uh, retention. So if there are no questions, we'll need a motion to approve the BPS Increasing Educator Diversity Plan. And I'm happy to take questions if you have it.
I'll make a motion to approve the plan.
Thank you.
Will second.
I'll second. Thank you, Ree.
Kristen Reed, do we have any questions or comments on this plan?
So this, when you say upload it into a state?
Yeah, there's a portal and there's a specific, um, template that every district has to use to upload it into the template. So what I did was copied everything out of the template, put it into a Word document, so it was easily readable because the template's about that.
Okay, so they're, they're asking for data or what are they asking?
No, they're asking for this.
Oh, just this.
Correct. They collect data every year, Rea, as part of data that we have to submit to the state. Christina does, um, EDS, over, yeah, state reporting, right on.
So it's just, it's a, uh, just a report is?
They're formally asking districts to have a plan for increasing educator diversity rather than just doing it or having policies about it, which we have.
Yeah.
They want a formal document.
Because that's how the State Department has interpreted statute.
Okay, I'm sure they're reading.
Yeah.
Well, they do say that, um, if, if they feel a district needs to make, um, modifications, they will send it back for districts to make modifications and boards to reapprove it. So I guess that assumes that someone is reading it. Um, but there is no, uh, group what exactly it is they're expecting, and that's been asked for and not received.
Any other questions, comments? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 I heard everybody, so unanimously.
Thank you.
On to our BCS HVAC Energy Management System Upgrade Bid Award.
Uh, so I just would like to share with everyone that, um, we received one bid for the BCS HVAC Energy Management System Upgrade from USA Mechanical and Energy Services out of East Granby, Connecticut. Uh, the BCS Temporary Building Committee met regarding this bid and voted to move forward the request to award the bid to USA Mechanical and Energy Services for up to a hundred and sixty-seven thousand two hundred and eight dollars. Uh, we had a discussion with USA Mechanical and Energy Services who shared that we would be able to do more of the project, and Andrew, Andrew had talked about this before, if they were able to complete it during the summer and not pay so much overtime right now during the school year to get it done by June thirtieth because that's at that point when they bid on it, when the bond was up. Um, I asked the town to extend the bond beyond June thirtieth. They held a special town meeting on Tuesday and the extension of the bond was approved through December thirty-first. So I'm asking for a motion to award the bid for the BCS HVAC Energy Management System Upgrade to USA Mechanical and Energy, Energy Services out of East Granby, Connecticut for up to one hundred and sixty-seven thousand two hundred and eight dollars.
Make a motion.
Thank you, Rea. Thank you, Ash.
Uh, any questions or comments on the HVAC Energy Management System Upgrade? I'll just say that I asked during our meeting why no one else could put in a bid. And it was, we were told that several companies did come and do the walkthrough and look at it. And John's feeling was that it's too small of a project for the limited number of companies that do this type of work. And most of them are big giant companies that are looking for giant projects and not a smaller school system, one school project, and that this company out of East Granby has recently started doing it and they're happy to, to do the smaller projects. Any questions or comments, or? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 I heard it, Rick. That was also unanimously approved.
Thank you.
And now Novus Insight Google Workplace Restructure and Incident Response Plan Projects for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four bid waiver.
Uh, so I believe I had shared with the board at a previous meeting that I anticipated that we would have a few, uh, projects coming up with Novus that we really needed to get done this year in order to put us in a better shape uh, with regards to our cyber liability insurance. Uh, we need to complete a Google Workspace Restructure process, which will create a new structure from top down, applying best practice security measures to all of the appropriate Google locations in district, ensuring that the appropriate user accounts and devices are receiving the, the proper policies that they need, and the cost of that is thirteen thousand one hundred and forty dollars. In addition, as part of improving our cyber liability insurance report card, the district really needs to complete an incident response plan project for twelve thousand three hundred dollars. The district really needs to complete an incident response plan project for twelve thousand, three hundred dollars, and that's a. A tabletop exercise where we go through what we would do if in fact we were hacked and what the processes would be and who does what and who's responsible for what. Um, I did share with the town um that we are doing this um. And I'm not sure where it stands with them, but I shared with them that this is something that we're gonna move forward with because we need to do this. Um, we intend to use money that we have projected in the choice budget for these technology uh related projects. Um, but because they're both with Novus, they're both within the same fiscal year. And together, um, they total more than twenty-five thousand dollars. And because of what we just had to go through with the um. Auditor with regards to Novus, I'm just gonna ask. That you waive the bid to award Novus Insight the contract to provide the services for the BPS Google Workspace Restructure. And the Incident Response Plan through the IT Services Collaborative. Uh, which is Professional Services Agreement Number CRSB two. So that we can move forward and do these projects prior to June thirtieth.
I can make that motion.
Thanks.
Thank you, Kristen.
One second.
Thank you, Ria. Um, questions, comments on the. Google Workspace Restructure and the Incident Response Plan Project.
Uh, what would the likely increase to our insurance be if we did not do this this year? Is it more than thirteen thousand?
W- we may have trouble getting insurance.
Ah, that would be even worse. That'd be a lot worse.
Yes, it would. Okay.
Have we ever done a incident response type of uh?
We do it, not, not for technology. We do it uh with the town through the state for like an emergency management type thing, and sometimes it. In, it's really all school-related, other times it's just town-related, sometimes it's a combination thereof. And that's done at Town Hall, but we have not done one with regards to our technology uh setup.
Is there any thought to how often this would have to occur? Or hopefully not often.
Yeah, I, I don't, it's not a yearly thing. Um, I, I think it's something that, you know, maybe every number of years. If you've ha- added new things and new components or new pieces, or maybe if there's a lot of new players or whatever the case may be, might be the time to do it again.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, please say hi.
Hi. Hi.
Uh, that was everybody again. Unanimous, okay. Finally, the BHS Replacement of Geothermal Pumps and Controls Bid Waiver.
So, as I shared before, we're as part of Kappa doing one pump and one control this year. Now that we're moving the other pump and control into this year, even though one part is out of Kappa. And one part is out of the operating budget, that amount will exceed twenty-five thousand dollars. So I'm going to ask that, well, first let me share that John got three bids for. Initial Phase One, which we were, just thought that was all we were going to do this year. And we went with the lowest bidder, which is BT Lindsay and Company. Now that it's both parts, we've already ordered the parts for the first part of it with BT Lindsay. So, um, I'm requesting that uh you waive the bid. Toward BT Lindsay and Company, the contract to replace both geothermal pumps and controls at Bolton High School.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Questions, comments on geothermal pumps? I mean, there's no reason to believe that we will get a different set of numbers for the same second time.
No.
So. Any other questions? All those in favor of the motion, please say hi.
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 That was everyone. Alright, future business.
We don't have any.
No.
Okay, well, looking for motion to adjourn.
Make that motion.
Second? Nope.
Ashley said.
Questions on the jury? Those in favor of this motion, please say.
Hi.
Hi.
Right.
Thanks.
One down. Alright, seven thirty. Welcome back, everyone. Call this meeting to order and start out with public comment. Is there anyone who would like to make a public comment this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on to the discussion on the Superintendent's Recommended Twenty Twenty-four, Twenty Twenty-five Budgets.
Alright, good evening, everybody. So, uh, what you have in your budget packet includes. The recommended budget itself, the question and answers for each page of the budget. Projected budget for grants, recommendation of new open choice seats. The new and enhanced stipend requests, area superintendent budget requests for next year. Uh, the current and projected AP and ECE offerings, I just thought that might be of interest to you for the high school. Um, as well as some revisions for the choice in Columbia enrollment. Uh, the, for projected budget for grants. Um, and those, along with revised appendixes A, D, and E, uh, because. I inadvertently added in the number of choice students that we're projecting for next year. We never do that. We always base that number off of the students that we have now. And the seats are, would be additional should we fill those seats, and in years past, we haven't always filled all those seats. Sometimes we do. Sometimes we fill more depending upon siblings, so hence the reason for the um revisions. So, I'm gonna go ahead and start if there are not any questions about that. And we're gonna start with pages one through ten, so. Um, are there any questions on page five? Okay, hearing none, page six. Okay. Moving on to page seven, summary by object code. Are there any questions or comments there? What's going on with the lights? It's always my eyes.
It's just a general question. Will we go page by page?
We're gonna go, I, I apologize. Yes, we're gonna go page by page. Yes.
They actually have, sorry, that's my fault.
Alright, uh, page eight. Page nine. Alright, moving into regular instruction, we're gonna start with Instructional Technology Program one hundred. Any questions there? Beyond what the Q and A has already given you. Okay, arts. Okay, English Language Arts. Okay, world language.
He gets one question, so a very small budget for adding back, hopefully, another teacher for this, so we think it's sufficient.
So that teacher's not in this budget unless you guys add it into this budget.
Yep.
So we did not budget, should that be added back in? So, let me just offer, where we, if we were able to add it back in. It shouldn't be a lot of monies, and we should be able to cover it in our choice budget should a teacher need. Additional resources beyond what we already had from having it previously.
Your opening remarks are, during the last meeting, you talked about the language teacher, and I'm mixing that up with something else.
So, in the, in the first budget ask, at the four-point-whatever percent, it was in the budget.
Oh, I see.
In the budget that I presented to you, that came out in order to get us down to three-point-five-two percent.
Okay.
I'm sorry, sorry. No.
What was that?
Was a cut. Say again.
Remind you what that was, what grade that was for.
Five and six.
Grades five and six.
Spanish.
It would, well, before it was Spanish and French because, and it was like an intro to both because we had a duly certified teacher. Who retired, and then he couldn't fill it, and then we cut the position. So, the add-back to that would be if you go to.
That reconciliation.
Yeah, on the, on page. Uh, fifty-five. That would be an add-back of a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three dollars, which is salary top step. With family benefits because. World like that, that's what's available out there, should one even be available. And that percentage comes out to what, Casal?
Uh, point eight-one percent.
So, right, having said that, though, like if we. Let's say we have a windfall in insurance, right? In the end, and depending upon what hap- right, the board may be able to make a decision that we can add it back in, you know, in my. Last, have full approach there. But it's not currently in this budget, so I apologize if that was unclear, everybody.
Yeah, and that's sort of a tough position to fill. How many months have we had that posted?
Oh.
Like a year?
Yeah, a year, a year.
We wanted it, it's probably would be hard to.
It's really hard, super hard.
Okay.
Um, question, question, sorry, uh, this could, just jogging my memory. Earlier you said that your budget is a six percent increase for health insurance?
Correct.
Three-point-eight-eight percent.
Correct, because that's based on retirements, what we plan for, for new hires. And people maybe make, have already made changes in insurance.
Okay.
To our benefit or not, and that all comes into play into that final number.
Okay.
But their rate increase is six percent?
Correct, the rate increase is six percent.
Okay, okay, so if the rate increase dropped to say three percent, we would only recoup about fifty-one thousand dollars.
Roughly give or take, and that's before we do open enrollment. The end of March, early April.
So, it wouldn't be able to fund the.
It wouldn't be able to fully fund a language program, correct. But, in the meantime, we're hiring for other positions.
And maybe we'll have.
And that we budgeted high for because it's science and it's school psychologists and it's special ed. And what if we get people fresh out of school and they're the best candidate? And we budgeted here, and we hired here, then we have a delta, and then maybe we can at least. I know that all sounds, it's, it's like a lot of moving parts. Alright, computer instruction. Okay, on to mathematics. Alright, on to science.
You know, I noticed the. Cost of chemical disposal, it seems to have gone up, up and up. I feel like this is a thing every year that, like, I feel like a few years back, it was like only a couple hundred bucks we had in that. And now we've just doubled and we'll, we'll remember asking about this in the past.
I think we were underfunded previously, and.
Um, so three parts, we're underfunded, prices have gone up, and also during the COVID time, we didn't do as many labs, we didn't generate as much.
Yeah. Fill up providers for that?
No. We got one really good one.
I'll give you a big bucket for it to work, everything else.
Alright.
I forgot.
Yes. Alright, on to social studies. And hearing none, on to vocational education. Business education.
So again, another really light budget.
Correct.
Um, an area where we're investing enough, any concerns? Or.
Joe, what, we don't have any concerns there, do we?
I, I did, couldn't hear the question.
Business education, she's like, you know, it's a very limited, it's like virtually no budget here. Any concerns that we're not doing enough?
None whatsoever. Yeah, um, we actually uh had a new teacher in the last few years. Who has gotten everything that they need to kind of make the program their own, uh, and the program is growing.
Does that, we talked in the last meeting about the personal finance, what fire, you know.
Yeah, that, that was not a huge budget issue. Now, not a lot of stuff needed for that, nope.
Yes. Good question. Family and Consumer Sciences. Hi, music. Okay, technology education. Continuing education. Okay, library media center. Athletics, you'll see there, that's a professional trainer uh piece that we took out. Um, you know, should there be a plethora of uh people that. Are available to do that job, and we can go back to uh using integrated rehab. Uh, we have budgeted for that in the choice budget for next year. I, I just felt like to put it in here as a placeholder right now. With the fact that we even tried to hire on our own for someone, I couldn't find someone. Um, just didn't see, and, and maybe if we have someone again, then the following year, we put it back into the budget, so that's the thinking there.
And then, the budget for coaches. Um, how, how does, how does that work with, you know, being a teacher, that then is a coach, does that come out of payroll or is that coming out of here?
So, we'll get, it comes out of stipends, and we'll, can we get, come to that when we get to that page?
Yep, because the amount here seemed.
This had nothing to do with those stipends that we pay for coaches. This is simply, that's a great question, to run the athletics program. So it's uniforms, it's travel, it's awards, it's supplies.
So the official support staff?
So.
Chain or ref to come to a game.
Correct, along with pay-to-play, right? So parents also pay to have their students play. And some of the monies from pay-to-play offset, this cost for refs would be higher if we did not have pay-to-play. And pay-to-play also uh pays for, or helps supplement the transportation. So, so this athletic budget would be much higher if we did not have pay-to-play in Bolton.
If I, so that line, just for clarity, uh, slash support staff. So, um, you need a site director, someone to kind of be in charge of the event, um, you need to um. Basketball especially, need a timekeeper, and now with the new rule with a shot clock, we have, we are now hiring an extra adult. To run that, it has to be a separate person, so that's the support staff. The officials would be the certified referees uh that are provided to the CIAC.
Okay, thank you. Not coaches at all.
Not coaches at all, yeah.
Kristen, um, would it make sense to include? The amount of money that we get from the pay-to-play on page, in appendix E? Which lists the true cost of application.
So it's hard because that's very fluctuating because it just depends on how many kids participate.
But you estimate the grants as well, so, I mean, it would be an estimate like all of the others.
I, I guess. I'm looking to Joe and Casal for some help here.
Um, yeah, I mean, we, we could take a, like, kind of like a shot in the dark at it. Um, based on trends with kids, but it does, you know, right now our girls' basketball team, who's doing very well, by the way.
Yeah.
Uh, has eight players, right? It just.
Yeah.
Right, and, and some of those players.
For a while we were at six. I'm just saying, in one season, right?
That's good.
And doing one.
They, well, they're in great shape, yeah. So, but if, so if you look at that and boys' basketball team has doubled the number, and that's an anomaly, but that's not something we could necessarily have.
Can't predict it.
Predict it.
Completely different numbers than it was last year.
Oh, right, right, but you must have trend data for the number of.
I, I'm sure.
Pay in sports each year, and you know how much it costs. So what is the current pay-to-play rate? Fifty, sixty, something like sixty-five? Or is it over a hundred?
And it's precedent, it is that first score.
First season. Per season and there's a family max and I want to say seventy-five dollars.
If you get multiple siblings, family cat.
So we're talking about twenty thousand dollars potentially? It's coming. Fifteen to twenty thousand, and that's, it's a significant amount that should probably be reflected somewhere in the budget.
Sure, all right, so let, let, let us work on that and, and see what we can do to. To your point, add to that appendix. Yeah, okay. Hang on, I gotta, I gotta write notes to my. Kasol, you captured that though, correct? Add to. Well, appendix is out again. Okay. All right, on to student support services. So. Are there any questions overall? On page thirty.
I have a question about. Fuel costs, why have they increased for special ed transportation, but they've decreased for all of our other transportation? You look on page thirteen of the answer, Q and A. Why the decrease in gasoline for operations and maintenance, cost per gallon decreased? And then transportation, why the decrease in diesel fuel, per gallon decrease, so.
Yeah, so in this slide, correct me if I'm wrong, not only are we paying for the van. For our eighteen to twenty-one year old program and wherever they take our students. But also, should a parent choose to transport their child to an outplacement? And we don't have to bear the cost of providing transportation. We provide mileage for a. Stipend, if you will, that comes out of here, so.
Use the federal IRS mileage reimbursement rate? I don't know if that went up this year, and I think it went down last year.
Yeah. Okay, maybe I said it wrong. Disregard what I said.
The transportation here, these are just the, the pure cost of the transportation, there's no fuel in these. Cause I thought I heard you said fuel.
Well, the Q and A mentions that the reason for the increase is an increase in fuel costs.
Under the special ed budget?
Yep, on page eight of the Q and A. Why is there an increase in student transportation out of town? So it's, it's gotta be line five, five, one, nine, which is transportation instead out of district. Gone off by four thousand dollars.
Cause we don't provide the fuel, unlike our transportation buses. Where fuel is external to a class, we pay for the class and we provide the fuel. This special ed transportation is, it's, this is, um, it's a different company.
So the company is raising their prices and blaming it on increased in fuel. Even though fuel prices have actually gone down. Can we reach?
Labor went up, so maybe, you know.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, so maybe the Q and A needs um some work there, more than.
Just in case anyone else notices.
Yeah.
I mean, it, it's just by chance that I noticed it myself, so it, it's definitely a minor thing.
Yeah, but we need to fix that Q and A, so that will get fixed, so Kasol and Beth will dig into that a little bit better and we'll have a better answer, thanks. We try real hard at these, I'm just saying.
It's never changing landscape.
I'm sure you've noticed how few questions I've had.
Don't have one question, that is my goal. It is a lot, I know it is, but God, I strive for it, I'm just saying. Anything else on this page?
I'm sorry, no, I'm sorry, we were just saying, I said to Kasol, I think one of the, we could certainly change the answer, but I think it's not, it is. Fuel cost is one of the pieces, but it's also that some of our kids are traveling further to schools, so just the overall cost. Is the number, the mileage, like the per mile, the cost per mile is probably what's raising it even more.
So maybe that's. Maybe that should be what he should say.
Yep, I think it's everything, it is, we're told that it's fuel, we're told that it's the cost of the vehicles, and we're told, I mean, I know because I know we're. We have kids placed, that's, the distances are kind of far.
Okay, we're, we're just gonna wordsmith that a little bit better.
We try to write share as much as we can as possible, but.
Right, I'm gonna move on then. To extended school year.
Have you had a fairly large increase in the number of kids doing extended school year because of COVID?
Much if I should be answering that.
Yeah, go ahead.
I can't, we can't say it's because of COVID, but the needs of students are just changing and it's. We've had an increase because of the needs of the students that we currently have in, in the schools, but we can't link it directly, directly.
Yeah, I mean, you hear about learning loss a lot of, of how you say for sure that it's one thing or another.
But there's definitely a greater need.
Right now there is.
Justifies the increase in.
We have more kids who are qualifying.
Tutorial and homebound instruction. Social work. Guidance. Nursing and medical.
Did we ever resolve the nursing shortage staffing problems we were having? But last year, year before, that, cause you're using a long-term sub.
Correct, we were, well, to help support, cause it, yeah, yeah, no, yeah, we're good, we still have the same long-term sub who helps us out when.
That was COVID driven.
Help, but that was primarily COVID.
Yeah, because of the number of callbacks and the amount of time. Parents and providing guidance and tracking things for the state, which we're not.
We don't have to do anymore.
At this point.
Psychological services. Feature language. On to administration, Monica could not be here, I'm not sure everybody heard me say this before, but she is sick and I wouldn't let her participate.
So that's the in-service?
Yeah. So that's professional development that teachers have requested.
But what does that cost cover, it's not, so their salaries and wages would be.
So might be, uh, they're gonna, like, for example, the um. National English Teacher Conference is going to be in Boston next year. And we're gonna send two teachers from Daryl School and two teachers from the high school, so in here is the cost to attend that conference. Great question. Central administration.
So the legal costs, how, I mean, it's just held flat, makes sense, but how is that actually billed?
Monthly. Both and separately for, for out of my office versus special edu-, I mean, it's the same bill, but it's delineated out because. There's a legal budget in special ed specifically for legal matters pertaining to special ed. And then legal matters, so perfect example was. We, Bolton, every other district, uh, were part of a class action suit. A year and a half ago. And shipment of good one had to represent us as part of it. And, you know, we got billed a portion of the bill, but we still got billed every month because we had to have legal protection for this class action suit. Um, the class action suit's finally over, but that's an example of like, we didn't anticipate we were gonna have that cost, right? So when we are going into negotiations with any group. I will contact the board's attorney to provide. Data regarding settlements from all over the state that they gather. And then they provide that information, I share it with the personnel committee, and that's how, you know, we move things forward there. Um, you know, there could be FOI requests to get pretty. Needing legal assistance, personnel matters, it's a whole bunch of things in there.
We held it flat or.
We held it flat, yeah.
Been our prior experience, has it gone way above that?
Well, we've had years where it went way above, and we have had years where it has gone way below, and they're just. Kasol and I had an in-depth conversation about forty-five minutes about this particular line, um, because it is so volatile. I, I, you know, I would have loved to have said, let's cut fifteen thousand dollars from here, right? And that'll be the year where we're gonna be thirty thousand dollars over. So.
We've had a lot of off-the-record negotiations, so saved quite a bit of money in this line in recent years.
Correct.
If you look on page seven, you can see that in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, we spent a hundred and four thousand on legal services.
Right, between special ed and, and, and this budget.
Okay.
Right, so. It's a hard one to.
I was just trying to get a flavor for what the.
And that's a fair, yeah, that's a fair question.
If you figure it out, let us know.
All right, school insurance.
That not include the. Oh, okay, so school insurance doesn't include like the cyber insurance.
It's in property and general liability, it's part of it.
And. Is what we are paying comparable to what other districts pay?
Well, the town. You wanna speak to?
Yeah, it, it's, we're in it with the town on this, it's a joint.
The town negotiates this policy, we do not.
They kind of drive.
Our portion.
There, where we land.
And I'll be honest with you. Last year, there, it was really, um. Tenuous because of our. Situation with regards to our cyber liability situation. And so I know that they're in the process of negotiating. For our contract moving forward for the next year right now. So this is our best guess.
Do you happen to know if the town portion of the insurance? Budget is greater than ours? Or.
We're, we're the big.
We're the big part?
We're the big part of everything.
Because it's always been negotiated by the municipality, because I think in a lot of places, that's how it starts, through the.
We'll have that same conversation.
Do they at least have conversations with you to make sure that the district's unique needs are being met?
Oh, yeah, 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 oh, yeah, they have.
Jim Rupert or Jill or both.
Collectively, yeah. It's out of Jim's office.
It was Jim and Lance, but I don't know who replaced.
All right, building administration. Okay, fiscal services.
Yeah, those are. So it's, it's the service. Contract. Like, we don't know what's gonna, you know, come through and how we use it.
Often they need to be repaired and maintained.
Well.
Like my friend at work, it's like every day.
Depends on which machine, depends on which school, depends on who's jamming it, who fixes it, and who doesn't.
Yeah, some of the repairmen are better than others.
And some are better than others, yeah. It's a lot of factors.
Yeah, just to really stand that to you at first, but.
Yeah. But teachers make a lot of copies. I think, you know, just by nature of the, of, you know, kids. Gotta have papers to work on, so. All right, systems management. So again, I, I guess I just, I wanna. Call out, even though it's in the Q and A, about the increase um for professional services for Novus. Um, just a reminder that this is due to the, during the course of their discovery this year. They found that a number of adult devices is three hundred and seventeen compared to what was reported by crack, which was two fifteen. Um, this required an adjustment this year, as you recall, for the endpoint management program, email protection and automated patching for windows and third-party applications. And response licenses. Um, this also provides uh specific reporting and protections most commonly requested for, as requirements for cyber liability insurance. Uh, in addition, our beam backup and replication services was reclassified from online services. Uh, the budget increase is seventeen percent due to the fee adjustment to cover the additional devices. Uh, that had not been budgeted for this year that we already had a twenty thousand dollar transfer for to cover in December. The actualized, the, the actual annualized increase from current year to next year would be seven percent. Had all of those things not been a factor.
I know that we switched from crack. Do you feel that the, you know, fairly significant increase in the cost of the service? Are we getting a comparable increase in level of service and?
We're getting more.
Question, what do the users think?
I mean, the fact that. Devices we had is probably.
Yeah, I, in fact, um, I had an issue. Yesterday, um, and Christina called Cam and, and he came running right over. And he comes bounding into my office and he says, I have great news. That's awesome, what is it? We all, we are down to twelve tickets. So. Correct, I can only tell you. How really hard they have worked to get us to that point. I, I think Jenny could speak to it from a teacher lens. Joe and Daryl, Beth, Kasol can all speak to it, Christina from. Our collective lenses, so I'm gonna let them speak, I'm gonna.
That was exactly my question, basically, it was what to, our people were very responsive and have just uncovered some other things that have helped. Make us more efficient, if that's what you say.
So are we, like, don't use crack services at all, then, like, when I, when I subbed for, like, they were the ones that fingerprinted me and stuff.
They're still fingerprinting.
Doing that type of service, okay.
Yeah, but they are not our technology support any longer. Yeah, great question. So we are very happy. And it was a good move. And I think as painful as it was for the town to be separated from us, which needed to happen for a lot of reasons. First and foremost, security for both parts. I, I think they are also happy with the level of support that they are getting as well. All right, on to page forty-seven, contracted. All right, on to page forty-seven, contracted salaries and wages.
I don't really have a question, just a comment. I remembered that when you that when you presented the new BDA contract to the board back in September, that you had included data about what the expected, the projected cost of each year of the contract was gonna be and the projection at that time, so six months ago, was that we would see a four point five three percent increase in our teacher salaries. We're looking at three point six, so that's a savings of about sixty thousand dollars, a full percentage point. Which is great.
Agreed.
And definitely something I think to highlight with the Board of Finance folks.
For sure. Hang on, just one second, I'm writing myself a note. For about the Board of Finance presentation, or Finance Committee presentation.
Yeah, did you like, answer the question of, is there still a presentation in the same way of there has been in the past?
There has to be, there has to be a presentation, both the Board of Ed and the Board of Selectment have to make presentations. And I believe our date for that
I know that that was one of the listed things that were
Correct.
Discussed.
But, but by charter, that has to happen. I believe
I mean, it's good for outside observers too.
It's either March twenty-sixth or twenty-eighth, I'm pretty sure, I think, or maybe it's a twenty-fourth, I don't know. Yeah, in March.
Too many meetings.
So the biggest part of our budget from a and like your, your point that you mentioned for we don't have the language teacher in there. What are the other nice to haves that you could put in there that we don't currently have in there?
So, I'm gonna let Daryl speak to that. Go ahead, Daryl, what would be the nice to haves that I keep cutting out of your ass?
We've had conversations about like, if that intervention, like, with the math coach, and to support students at different levels of intervention. But bringing that also up to middle school, like, we talked about possible math coach and literacy coach. Provide intervention to students at that level, but the greatest need in general for intervention is at the younger grade, so we're in very good shape, so we have conversations on where would be nice to have things, including the world language.
And I love world language school all the way down to kindergarten. I'd love to have another music teacher. I'm, I'm just being honest, right? Yeah, yeah, I mean, it was a great question, and, you know.
Yeah, we've kinda gone back and forth on instructional coaches over the years, and we've had to pull them in the classroom and that kind of thing.
Correct, yeah.
But this also assumes filling vacant positions that we're trying to hire, correct?
Currently, this, currently, this does, yes, yep, it currently does.
So we have the high school science teacher in there.
Correct, so, yep, so we have high school science. We have, the dean of students is not in this budget, the dean of students is paid for on choice, but we're getting ready to post that because she's retiring. We have school, and, keep me honest, everybody.
Do you have to use those choice funds for the dean of students, or that's just how we elect to do it?
That's what we agreed to do when we put in the dean of students position many years ago. There was a need to have, at a high school, there's a need to have, regardless of the size. Bigger students, bigger things, right? And we've got a high school principal who also teaches, like, ideally, we'd have a physics teacher. Right, but right now, Joe's teaching two sections because of we had a situation where the science teacher, right, just before school started, couldn't come back. So, we took on more choice students, and so the agreement was, we would keep it in the choice budget, we would not try to migrate it into the operating budget. And we, that's where that position would lie. And so, to honor that agreement.
Sure.
Right? Not absolutely mandated, but it was a, an agreement that we made that we're gonna continue to, you know, uphold. So we, correct me if I'm wrong, guys, or add to this, so we've got science at the high school, we've got a psychology position at Center School. We have well potentially two special ed positions at the high school, one we're trying to fill right now. I, sorry, at Center School, one we're trying to fill right now for the person that just resigned, but if we don't, we're gonna need to fill it for next year, and we have a special ed teacher retiring next year. We've got a fifth grade teacher, a fourth grade teacher position opening, because that person's retiring. We've got a social studies position, seventh and eighth grade, that person's retiring. What did I forget?
Gives me a good flavor, thank you.
Still have a couple pair of positions.
We have the ever unable to fill pair of positions, although, maybe we have one. We have one, it's very exciting, good job. Yeah, so.
I was actually gonna say that my impression is that the delta between the eighteen's ask and what you paired and, and what you've come to the board with is a lot smaller than usual.
Correct.
So, is that because the teachers, and feel free administrators and teachers to jump in? Is that because the teachers have simply given up asking for things because they keep getting cut?
I'm gonna ask Jen to answer that, because
Are we really at a good place with funding what needs to be funded?
Fair question, Jen?
Yeah, I mean, from science perspective, we feel supportive, we, you know. We do a zero budgeting approach, so we look at what we need based on which courses we're offering each year, what supplies are needed for those choices. We're not, you know, what we're budgeting for is what we need, and we've been lucky to have been supported, so. My department anyways.
Thank you, I'm gonna ask administrators.
I would echo the zero-based budgeting piece is big, because they really focus on what they need. And to pretend to heck, and everybody's really good, if we shorten something we need in now, what I mean, and there, we give the teachers what they need in their hands at any time in a given year, so teachers feel very supported.
And we set aside some choice funds each year for those, oh my god, we need this right now, right? And so we have the monies to be able to do that, because we don't budget placeholders for those kinds of things, right? You wanna?
Yeah, I think my department is very well supplied, there's not much that they ask for that we can't find the money for, we might have to juggle things, but the high school staff especially is really great, that they, they're using what the general ed teachers are using for supplies, so there's not a great need for additional supplies at the high school. Elementary with reading programs and things, those are a little bit more costly, but we always find what, what we need to get for the kids.
You know, to add a specific example to all that, a lot of new teachers at the high school over the last few years, right? So, and they come in with their own areas of interest or strengths, I'll use art as a very specific example. And so we hadn't budgeted for lots of extra ceramic and photo stuff for Mr. Gallo when he came to us, so that could have been a year like, hey, sorry, use what you got, and we'll budget for the next year, but that wasn't the superintendent's attitude, it was, what do you need now? Let's use the, like, choice funds and, and other things, let's get you where you want to be right away, make you whole, let you build a new program, and then we're just maintaining. And, and the teachers have been very outspoken, our new staff, about how grateful and, and how odd they think that is.
Thank you, I, I appreciate the
It's a great question, and I
Your willingness to ledge.
Yeah, no, listen, because that, that's really what, what I wanted to say.
But that goes with teacher retention, that because as a new teacher, they're not being short because they're, they're new person, they can get up and running.
Correct.
Right away.
Right away, yeah, or they're not, you know, I think teachers always put in their own money, it's just the nature of the being, it just is. I think I think it's probably fair to say, at this point, eleven years in now, our teachers are putting a lot less of their own money in here in Bolton than they used to. Because when I first got here. Well, yeah, but I'm just saying, though, that, you know what I mean, so I think, you know, to the board's credit in terms of the support I think the zero-based budgeting is huge, and I think teachers, I think, are finally in a place where they recognize if they need something, they've gotta tell their administrator, and their administrators figure it out. The culture used to be, well, I'm not gonna say anything, because not gonna get it anyway, so.
And, and there's also, the PTA is amazing, you know what I mean, so enrichment opportunities, presentations, so
It's a lot of factors, yeah, yeah. You know, even like the boosters, right? And wanna saw the inside of the baseball field this spring, before we played base, you know, putting up dugouts, whatever, like, right? So it's all of the pieces that the board has done, but it's also then are supporting organizations too, I think it's a combination, for sure, but
I'm gonna go out on a limb and say that I think it's also partly the culture that you have created in the district and the example of, you know. We gotta do preparing budgets that seem very responsible and aren't coming in year after year, asking for you know, this new program and that new program, and all kinds of things that we would have to add and then support and that you don't need, or, it, it's just, yeah. It seems good to me.
Thank you, I appreciate you.
Kristen, I was gonna say, I know for some of my teachers, I have to call them sometimes, two and three times, and say, budget was due two days ago, you sure there's nothing you wanna put in there? I have some teachers who just don't put things in, because they do take the zero-based budgeting seriously, and they're like, I have everything I need, I can get my supplies from general ed or at the high school from, from the, the teachers that I'm working with, and they don't just put in for, for stuff. Other districts I've been in, people just put in to put in, but I'm telling you, sometimes I'll call two and three times, are you sure there's nothing, don't you wanna, no, I don't, I don't need anything. So, they're, it's, really, it's amazing, they're
That's good to hear, and I, I appreciate you saying that, I know year after year, I always it, it always stands out to me how small a percentage of the budget regular instruction is.
And yet, that's where the work happens.
Right.
But most of it, anyway, right?
Right, but clearly you are doing an awful lot with what you do have, making the most of the resources. And I, I mean, I, I'm guessing that there's also been shifts in how instruction is happening, maybe less workbooks and more online stuff.
Yep.
But but still, the fact that you have a cut again this year in regular instruction, and it's not to an outside observer, it might appear that, well, we're whacking away at education in Bolton, but that's actually not the case.
Correct. You know, and I will share with you that a lot of those cuts in regular education came during budget deliberations that I had with each administrator, when it came time for their budget. And I would ask questions like, okay, wait, do we need this right now? I'll use music as a perfect example, right? So you wanna, can you talk about that for a second?
So, they have a five-year replacement cycle, hey, what's the next instrument, what's the next instrument? Saxophone came up this year, and as it turns out, we had another saxophone player, and another older sax that was lousy. They were gonna get through, Kristen asked the question, is this something that we could put in students' hands now that'd be used? The answer was yes, I pulled it out of the budget we're talking about now, and the saxophones are, were actually being played in an hour before you got here, Jen.
We use choice monies that we had set aside for regular instruction purchases. Because we're never exactly sure what those are gonna be, right, what are the needs, right, it's a guess, right? So we put in a placeholder in the choice budget, so a lot of those things that got cut are in teachers' hands now, because when I asked the question, do we need it now, is it better for kids if they have it now? Like, why would we make kids wait or, or miss the opportunity? Like, that doesn't make any sense to me, so that also happens as part of that process.
And, and in full transparency, sometimes the superintendent asks me that question, and I go, no, no, this really is a next year thing, it's not something we should be, let's do something else now.
Yeah.
This belongs next year.
Right, true, yeah, depends.
Yeah, I feel like that's pretty well reflected, as you go through the programs and the Q and A, and not just this year, but every year, it'll say like, well, this year we're using what we have, and we don't need to buy as more, and this year we're doing the three-year online subscription, and this year, you know, it's, it's reflected in everything. It's not just every year we're asking for everything, it's that, you know, we realized that we didn't use as many art supplies as we had in stock, so we don't need to buy the art supplies this year.
Yeah.
You know, it's not that we're not funding regular instruction and art supplies, it's that we are able to recognize that we have
What were you?
What we, what we need for coming years, so it's thoughtful, it's a zero-based, like
A couple grants here and there, and instruction, even if you found it, it's not going to move this budget at all. It's all contractual salaries.
Completely driven by that, and a little bit in special ed. Yep, yep. Okay, we're on to personnel benefits, page forty-eight. Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, okay, you're good, okay. Thank you, Sol.
And I guess on coaches, do we have open coaching roles?
We always have open
Last issues, no?
Yeah, I, I mean
Anything to hear about on the interweb?
It continues to be a challenge, right? It, it just is, and we feel, we seem to see, as do other districts, less people wanna coach.
And it's never the amount that they get paid, it's not about that, right?
Well, and we level-set the amount they got paid a couple of years ago, because they were paid woefully less than they were anywhere else around us. So we were having a super hard time at that point, even getting one applicant. So you know, and it's hard because of time of day the coaching happens, unless you have a job, it starts at the crack of dawn. Or you have a job where you can walk away from home, or you're a teacher who happens to have that particular sport, you know, you know how to do it, you know, like, if Daryl were teaching, I'm sure he'd be coaching
I did, yeah.
Track. You know what I mean, so we're always looking for practice. All right, any questions on benefits? All right, moving on to operations, page fifty, any questions there? All right, so here are none, moving on to transportation, any questions there? All right, moving on to Appendix A, there's our capitalist, which you have a revised Appendix A, which will be put in to the board's budget book, I, I sent you guys that. So the sixty-eight thousand dollar district utility truck got moved to next year, you wanna cross that out? And the VHS geothermal pump is out, because we're taking care of that now. And the total is changed.
So, are we spending eighty, or proposing to spend eighty thousand dollars on a two thousand and five?
No, the pickup that we have right now is from two thousand and five, we just leave that there.
As a reminder.
As a reminder of just how old it is, yes.
Was that our question, was that our truck or a hand-me-down?
One of them's a hand-me-down, it's either this one or the other one, I don't remember which one it is anymore, to be honest. I think it might be this one.
Well, we'll get a truck.
So I believe your total there, hang on, let me just double-check my appendix, I think it's two oh four, but
It's on the screen. It's what you sent me, I think it's updated.
Two oh four, one twenty-five, yeah, just so you know, when you cross that out, you're both Okay, and then the summary of the budget adjustments. I mean, again, we've talked about that, but are there any questions? Moving on to Appendix C. I did see today in the governor's proposed budget that our ECS money stays flat, which is exactly what we've budgeted for here, so that's good news. Any questions in Appendix D? Any questions in appendix D? Uh, you have a revised appendix T that I sent to you, as well as a revised appendix E, and then we're gonna look to figure out how we put in pay-to-play for athletics.
Why was the chef print? Oh, I'm sorry, it's open choice.
Yeah, so in the in your open choice numbers that you have in your budget books, we've got to, uh, let's talk, we we tackle that right now. I had inadvertently added the six open choice seats that we're recommending in kindergarten to the number we currently have, we never do that, we never know, we could get none. So we budget based on the number we of students that we have now, uh, for next year, and then the six would be additional, should we get that many? And you can see we haven't had six in a really long time. We open six seats, but that doesn't mean we get six students, right?
Yeah, these lower numbers at the upper end of the elementary school from COVID years.
Correct. Yep.
Everybody stayed home kind of instead of sending their kids to some town.
Correct, and remember too, we also have had towns that have now been added as choice options in our area that are are also diluting our ability for the area that we draw from for choice as well. And the recommendation would be just for kindergarten seats and then any sibling seats that may come up as well, so.
So that column choice seat recommendation is just new.
Correct.
Versus the column to the left is existing.
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
So that thought process, they'd start in kindergarten and come through.
All the way through.
Starting later in classes.
Correct, you know, there are incentives for us to take students later on, we've done it a few times.
Yeah, that's kind of my question.
Once with great success, two times mixed. It's just better if you start from the beginning, right?
That's right, about to add seats in, I was like, three, four, five, or fifty-one.
Potentially, but they would be sibling seats.
Threes and fours and.
Yeah, but it would really just be sibling seats, um, instead of.
Do we have siblings that come in those kinds of grades? I mean, why didn't they not come in the first place?
Because they have a kindergarten kid and that kid's in someplace else, and then maybe the parent moved from one part of Hartford to another, and it's now our section or whatever, or it's the section that we draw from and their friend has a kid in Holden, it's like, no, I really want my kid to go to Bolton, but can my kid who's in third grade also come too if my kindergarten comes? All right, so then appendix E, you have that revision, um, and we will add, we'll figure out, I don't know, right? So we're gonna figure out pay-to-place and how or other there. And then appendix F.
Question, because the kindergarten class for this year went down to two teachers, do we expect them to then first grade to go down to two teachers next session or?
Not yet, so right now, in this budget, we have it three sections for first grade. It may be two sections, and it may be based on whatever happens with the budget that we move somebody to the fourth grade position that's currently open.
Right.
And we not fill that position?
Just fill it in-house.
In-house.
Which saves us, but.
Correct, but we want to see what we get for kindergarten enrollment because what if?
Yeah.
What if, I'm just saying, right? Kindergarten enrollment ends up being a lot higher than we anticipate, we could always move a first, you know, one of those sections to kindergarten and have two sections in first grade, so because of the time of the year, we got a lot of balls in the air that we don't have answers to yet.
Do we expect that we're gonna have, um, Eddie or a few like, like parents contesting the the new new cutoff date, like there is.
Can you hang on one second, Joe, why is there no one?
It's still up, I just shut this off because we got the last page, that's all.
We're recording, so what happened to Sue and Ben?
Yeah, Sue and Ben.
They're still there.
They're still there.
They're just, I just shut this off.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, what did you, I'm sorry.
So, like, part of the new law says that if like, if the child turns five after the September first cutoff, the parents can contest it if they feel that their child is ready.
They apply for.
Yeah, are we expecting to have any of that or?
We already do.
We already do.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would think with the change being so recent, there's.
More onset, whereas like, it's gonna stop like within the next year or so.
Well, if they change the law.
Right.
Like, if they change the law in another year to be, if you're five by September first, you get to come to school, and if you're not, you don't.
Yeah.
Right, versus this quasi place that we're in right now, which is.
I always thought January first was far too late and that.
I was a January first kid, and then like, I ended up like, having a pretty first grade teacher and getting held back, and then we moved, and I was ended up being right in the middle. Where, so, and funny, it was like my senior year, the high school principal stood up the first day of first senior class, he's like, so maybe you're turning eighteen before the end of the year, do not sign yourself out of school, like, finish the year. Which I know we probably had like a few of them do it, like, but.
Yeah.
Obviously, I was not.
Yeah, I was curious about that, how many sections going forward and if we're gonna be shifting year because I'm concerned about how teachers are gonna like movement, I know that like this year is.
Right, because did we get a student kindergarten that they figured that the year was finished, the law had was already kind of going in place, did they just hold their kids back anyways?
Right, and that's what we don't know, right, we don't know that, so we're in the process of doing enrollment now.
People have to be moving back.
But people can enroll their kids till the day before school starts, do you know what I mean? Like, not everybody does it in the.
Summer, we had, I think, two registrations of a summer, summer before that was like fifteen, so.
Yeah, yeah, it's hard to predict.
Right, and we, you know, we we sent out the information through both to to every parent in district, because who knows, right? And then I sent it to the town, I asked the town to put it on their website, I asked them to put it out in the bulletin, I asked them to put it out through social media or or whatever venue it is that they use, so we we.
In the two schools, but also did they.
And, correct, and we sent it to the two.
Sent it out.
Yeah, we we sent it to them and to, um, yeah, Montessori and George Mountain also, so.
Yeah, I mean, people are just getting dumber and dumber, you beat their heads over shit, and they just can't figure it out. I mean, I was at the ATM the other day, and there was the drive-through lane, and there said closed, there's a huge sign, close, somebody drives up there and they're sitting there and they're yelling into the thing, okay, it's a close, open your frickin' eyes, signs all over town, but they don't know.
I think that's one question, that enrollment.
Yes.
If it would have happened between twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, from eighth grade to ninth grade, going from the center school to the high school.
Yeah.
It's not so much.
We had a lot of students.
Any, any at all where we don't think that fifty-three might bounce back up?
It it's entirely possible, here's one of the bounces that we saw, we always have kids who go to East Catholic, we always have kids who go to a private school like KO or or whatever. But for the first time in as long as I've been, actually, probably in as long as I've been an educator, we saw a ju- a big jump going to technical schools.
Oh, interesting.
And to agricultural schools, we've always had maybe a kid or two go to Boag, but not four or five or six, um, and, you know, I think as COVID was as we were coming out of COVID, there was a lot of data to suggest that you don't really want to be in debt from going to college, and you should go learn a trade because you can make a lot of money in a trade and never go to college and be just fine, and that was a paradigm shift from pre-COVID, which was go to college, go to college, everybody needs to go to college, you should go to college.
Yeah, really, it's been like the last ten years or so, I feel like in the state of Connecticut, it was been like, you know, there's a lot of manufacturing jobs on filled, a lot of unfilled manufacturing jobs, and therefore, it's finally that people are starting to think that way.
Yeah, and the the state put on.
Correct.
A a huge advertisement, like a real push, open more magnet schools, and really pushed in to advertise more, um, and some of those students, um, are coming back to to Bolton High School.
Sure.
We have another one, we heard of today.
We did have a lot go to the magnet school, yeah, a lot, a lot.
Yeah.
Up to in ninth grade, a larger number than usual.
And specific, you know, delineation of magnet schools or whatever the case may be, so, um, so it's hard to tell, a a number of years back, we had a huge bump where we had kids because more magnet schools opened up and kids went to magnet schools and that was a choice, and then my sophomore year, half of them went back. So.
Just as part of the budget, like a last year, the the big question was.
Yeah.
Can we continue to support this?
Correct, you know, and I think some parents.
Enrollment is really important.
One hundred percent, and I think some parents made decisions for their kids based on the information that was put out as part of the budget, that high school athletics and teacher positions were going to be cut, so parents had real concerns about what was going to be able to be offered at Fulton High School and whether or not those options would even be good, God bless you, for their kids. And that was a re- that was a factor for some, for some, not for all, but for some. For sure. So. All right.
One thing that we as a board, when we're talking to the Board of Finance, um, and to the public, they want to bring up again this year is the effect of inflation on our budget.
Yep.
So I've been tracking budget stuff since FY fourteen.
Yes.
I mean, first of all, this, although this is the second highest budget ask we've had in the last five years, going back to FY fourteen, uh, we're actually below average, the average ask has been four point zero nine percent, we're below the average for your tenure.
Thanks.
And the interesting thing, though, is that the actual increase, what gets approved by the voter over that period has only been two point three one percent. And that plays into the fact that if you look at what we budgeted, uh, it gets FY thirteen, it was about twelve point eight million. The purchasing power of that today would be seventeen point two million, which is clearly higher than what we are asking for, so we are still continuing to trail the rate of inflation. In my mind, that just speaks to one, our long-term budget history being very conservative and responsible. But also, th- this year in particular is also another example of that, you know, I don't I hope no one will come out and say that no one in the public would say that the ask this year is unreasonable. From my perspective, it seems very reasonable.
Thank you for saying that, also included in your packet, which I think to your point, and I'm gonna ask for your help when we work on that slide for the Board of Finance, or for Finance Committee, thanks. Is the information that I shared with you about the budget asks for surrounding towns and the superintendent's budget asks, and I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that Bolton is the lowest in that entire group. And that includes Coventry, East Hartford, Ellington, Hever, and Glastonbury, Manchester, Summers, South Windsor, Southfield, Talan, and Burnet. All right, so I guess at this point, what is your pleasure? Do you want to take a vote on this this evening? Do you want to come back in two weeks, talk some more about it, or do you want to take a vote and we will fix the things that we've discussed fixing and add things to the presentation for the Finance Committee that we've talked about, fix the some of the things on both athletics and AP and ECE courses, um, on that one slide, what's your preference?
I mean, I don't have a strong feeling about it, I don't suspect that we're gonna be cutting, but, um, we have some people missing and.
Well, they're on, we just have one person missing, and I'm not sure whether or not she'll be able to attend the next meeting because she will be traveling. She may be able to, but it will be virtually from out of this country.
My preference would be to to wage.
Fair enough.
I would like to study it a little bit more.
Yeah, fair enough.
Yeah.
Okay, fair enough. All right, so we will work on those fixes, if you will, um, and I think what I'd like to maybe try to do is, um, maybe we could try to connect so I can put together a slide for the presentation for finance regarding the information that you have, um, take into account the things that were shared here tonight, and maybe do a mock-up presentation to bring to the table for the next meeting, and we can kind of maybe work that out too, how does that sound?
Good, I think that.
All right.
Sounds like a wise use of time.
Playing that, all right. All right.
Anything else? Motion to adjourn. Question, comments, follow the favor of motion, please, I.
Uh, who motioned it, Lynn? Kristen, okay, sorry, she didn't hear. All right, thank you, everybody, thank you.